Good evening. Would this meeting of the Oyster River School Board come back together? And would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and his republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
As you know, we start at 6:30 to review the manifests. That portion is not televised, so you're joining us here. And the first thing is public comments. I will again talk a little bit about public comments being to address issues and things on the agenda. I will gavel you if you make snide remarks about any of us or address personalities. So with that, just a friendly reminder.
Where do you get gavel?
I have the gavel.
And this is where she hits it.
Mr. Rubin.
Peter Rubin, Lee. I wasn't going to say anything, but I was handed this note as I was walking out the door, which is relevant to the agenda. I just hope it's true. It says that the school board ethics policy is going to be discussed tonight, and it doesn't say anything about electronic media accounts and in general electronic policy. You might remember that we had a little issue with that about a year ago, and I would urge the board to include a policy language that, you know, basically treats school board members like we would treat anybody else in regards to electronic media. I'll stop there because I'm not sure I know what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
Hi. Kenny Rotner from Durham. And two comments. One is, at the board last meeting, we really started the discussion about the possibility of Newmarket students and the proposal from Newmarket to begin discussion. And I thought the conversation at the board table was very commendable in talking that this is just preliminary, talking that we'd want to look at other options, and it's not as if we're doing Newmarket or nothing, to see what our schools might be without Newmarket, what that would entail. I might be wrong, but I would encourage the board or administration to set up some sort of forum much sooner than later in the community. I think this is a real talking point in the community. People develop ideas, some of them based on things that maybe really are not factual. And I think to just start a discussion in the general community before things really get out of hand outside of this kind of a forum, I think it would be a good idea. The second thing, and again, I apologize if this really is, I don't know what the word would be, if I shouldn't be saying this, but I don't mean to denigrate the long-range planning committee. I think that people put in an inordinate amount of time and energy and use their expertise to come up with the projections that are going to be for our enrollments going down the line. And I think that's great. In my profession as a physician, if I was going to do something with that magnitude based on predictions, I probably would be looking at second opinions before I ran down that track. And I don't know if it's appropriate or not because I really don't know the qualifications of people, but I don't know, maybe it might be worthwhile to see if there's someone who really specializes in looking at that kind of long-range planning. I would imagine there are so many variables to consider. I know that currently we look at how many children are born in the district, and that lets us predict maybe how many kindergarteners we're going to have, and that seems very appropriate. Certainly, as we know a class size that's established, we move through the district that. But I would think that the economy, the turmoil in the housing market plays a big factor. The demographics of our district, as an example, when I moved into my neighborhood, we were the youngest family in the block. There were no kids on the block at all. There was a turnover within a series of maybe six, seven years, and all of a sudden there were lots of kids in the neighborhood. Maybe Durham is due for that kind of turnover again, so I just throw that out. And again, I really don't mean to denigrate the long-range planning committee. I give them all credit and respect. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Taylor, Durham. Tonight you are considering several policies on board governance. I wrote a letter today describing my concerns about the latest revisions. I will not repeat all the details that are here, but I am particularly concerned about the policy BBBF on the student member of this board and about policy BBAA on individual board members. I think you risk sending a bad message to the students and the community if you adopt the revisions to change the student member to a student representative. Why? You are all members as well as representatives, but the board, but the word "member" indicates someone who belongs, who is a part of the board. The word "representative" alone indicates more of a liaison role, someone who doesn't really belong but who just attends. Show respect for the student member and the students in general by keeping the student as a member. As Kay Morgan suggested last time, keep the old policy and add a sentence on voting. The changes to the policy on board member authority weaken the right to know the citizens of the district by increasing the gray area of what you can do in private. Please make sure that actions of the board are clear and only by vote at a proper meeting. Please make sure that delegations to board members can only be done by vote at a proper meeting. These are points the board violated repeatedly last year. Show that you want to correct those wrongs by keeping these rules clear. Don't send the message that you want to allow the wrongs of last year to happen again. Please keep the right to know strong in our district. There is no rush to change these policies. These policies are the laws that govern our district. Please make sure you get this right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Superintendent's actions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first action is to consider a motion for approving the second reading of the B policies, and the Madam Chair is going to walk through those policies one by one.
Yes. I am. We did get input from a couple of places, and we went over them again, revised some more, and you have before you BAA evaluation of the board. We were especially discussing the board goals, and it was a feeling of the committee, and Megan, Anne, please join me if I'm not doing this right, the feeling that the board should adopt or approve or incorporate the goals that the standing committees that we have develop, rather than having small, little person, not personal, but board goals which would be less than district-wide. Therefore, we have asked the committees to set their goals, bring them to us, and when we get to the future search and develop those goals, they will also be part of the board's goals, and we will then evaluate how well we're meeting those. And that's what you have before us. We are researching a form to use for the, our, so if anybody would like to move this with or without changes. There certainly has not been any, throughout this, any intent to weaken the right-to-know law. I think in this district, we're very aware of it, and now when we have both a law and case law to guide us, so if there is a motion.
I make a motion to approve policy BAA evaluation of the board.
Second.
That was moved by Krista, and seconded by Tom. Discussion. Anne.
I think our intention was to take the grayness out of the policy and the mis- implication that individual board members would be evaluated. And we do not act as individuals, we act as a board. So the evaluation, the intention of this policy is that the board evaluate itself, not that individual board members evaluate themselves.
Well, since I've seen down like a lot of committees, this is pertinent to me. And I was actually worried, I think I brought up the last board meeting, how I'm supposed to evaluate myself when I didn't really have any goals. But I, but I, but this is good because it helps to connect some of the committees back to the board itself. I mean, other than me coming in here and reporting what we're doing on the board, if I do have some goals or some way that we can give direction or focus, it'll help me focus when I'm at those meetings, so I like it. And the second thing, I'll keep it brief, is I like the structure of this new policy setup that we have. I know I've heard the concern about the right-to-know, but I mean, it's about as open as you can get. I mean, our backup policy goes up on a Friday. You have till Wednesday, if you can find it on our website, to look at everything. It gives you an opportunity to send an email to us or come and public comments, and then you get to see us do it, and then, you know, there's another time, again, another Friday, the backup thing goes on. You can see what the revisions are. It gives you till the following Wednesday to come in, and you get to see it again occur in an open meeting. So I'm hard-pressed to see how you could make this more, and the policy committee things are open meetings, so you can attend them. So I think that this is about as transparent as you can possibly get, and I think it's an improvement.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Where in this policy does it talk about evaluating committee?
It does not.
Okay.
It's that we're evaluating the goals, our goals.
Right.
And it's the policy committees thought that our goals should be the adopted goals from the committees.
Right.
The committee brings.
Which doesn't say that in here at all.
It doesn't, but that's.
We can create a procedure.
We haven't.
Okay. All right.
If you see, we're researching the form.
Okay.
The procedure. Megan.
I just want to clarify, sometimes there's committees of the board. We, as a full board, will be discussing certain things, and that could lead to certain goals as well. So it's not just these smaller, you know, three-person subcommittees that would feed into that. And that Jim took the action item from the policy committee to look at creating in our document to support this. So personally, I found this, the way it was originally written, to be confusing, and the self, using the word "self," I had the same impression, we, you know, as individuals doing a self-criticism, you know, it didn't make sense. So I feel like this is more consistent with what's recommended. It gives us the opportunity to clarify specifically through the procedures, so I support it.
Tom.
Just a question, are we talking about a calendar year or a school year?
I.
Calendar year. Calendar, right.
No. I thought it was March.
So you'd have to be done before the March.
The school year.
Maybe March.
Okay.
Krista.
I just want to point out that in case you're unfamiliar with the way they're written, is the appendix BAA-R at the bottom, where it says researching for form to use, that's what they're referencing as to the procedure that will be created. So this policy is already referencing the non-existent procedure that will be made and we'll vote on later, and that's why I don't think anyone pointed that out, so it may be a little confusing. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Could I have a show of hands, please? All in favor, motion passes. Then we have BB, legal, school board legal status. And again, we went with the state law, and Mr. Taylor has some input tonight, which the superintendent says makes sense to replace applicable, applicable law with.
Replace the SB2 reference with applicable law. I'm going to go ahead and go the same road you did.
Okay. Go back to the applicable law and strike the SB2. If that's.
We would need a motion with an amendment if the board agrees.
So if anybody, we went, the number of members, we went with the state statutes and decided that the student rep should not be listed in this because it's a school board legal status, and the school board, and the student representative is not mandatory or legal thing. So if I have a motion, I would like it with, with the change of SB2 to applic- I still can't say it. Applicable.
Maybe you did it.
I know.
Look, don't make me say it again. Anne.
I make a motion to approve the school board's legal status, policy code BB, with a change, changing applicable law SB2 to applicable law.
Second.
Moved by Anne. And seconded by Krista. Discussion. Krista.
Can you just explain the reasoning for changing applicable law to SB2? I don't understand.
We think the reference is wrong.
The what?
The reference, the legal reference is wrong.
Oh, at the bottom.
And that way we capture the correct, because whatever the law is, we're going to follow it.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Anne.
Would it be appropriate, Jim, for us to add an "our" policy to this, referencing that currently the applicable law is SB2?
It may not be. That's the part we have to refer. We have to research that, and by doing that, you keep the policy before you actively. And so, you know, if, by, so you capture the current law. If you want to later put in the actual reference, we can do that, but that particular reference is wrong.
Okay. So could we do the same thing that we did with our previous policy, where we have a future regulation?
Sure. I can put "our" policy that actually puts the context of the law in procedure.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, motion carries. Now we get to BBA, school board powers and duties. We do have input tonight questioning the adopted policy.
Do you want me to address it, Madam Chair? Do you want me to address it?
Yes.
So the import is that this particular policy is about duties and responsibilities instilled by the state or the nation, and when we were going through that policy, we, we put in and adopted school board policy, and it's sort of like if you were writing a computer program, you just made a loop. And so it's really not necessary because the policy isn't about us, it's about the powers we get from a state and federal government, so it's also a good change.
Well.
If you so choose.
I have mixed feelings about that because school board powers and duties means, what are we supposed to do? We are supposed to follow federal and state laws, but there are many policies that are not required and that we have, and we should follow those as well. So Krista.
I make a motion to approve policy BBA as written.
Second.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Anne. Discussion.
So the adopted policy is our policy, right? Is that what it's supposed to be?
Policies that we've written, yeah.
Yeah, that's the last thing. So I mean, can we, it's vague, I guess, and I'm not meaning to be wordsmithy, but can we make an adopted school board policy? Is that too specific, or does that lose the?
No. That which, you're moving that as an amendment?
Yes, please. I'd like to make a motion to amend it to say adopted school board policies.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
The amendment is made by Al, seconded by Anne.
Al, can you?
To add adopted school board policy in the last line of the.
School board in between adopted and policy.
Hey, that's a motion.
Oyster River School. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I guess I'm still not clear. If, are we allowed to have policy that's not applicable to the state, federal laws and rules of New Hampshire School Board of Education?
Yes.
Okay.
In the absence of state law or regulation, your school board policies become de facto law of the school district and would be used in a court hearing, for example, to justify the action of the board if there's no law that governs that action. If you have a stated policy, it's very powerful.
So it makes sense that we should have that in that policy then, because it's an immeasurable agreement.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. Could we show a hand? Seven in the affirmative. The amendment passes. Now.
I think you, procedurally, Madam Chair, you now have to move the question as amended.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if you were leaving it.
I was just writing.
Okay.
Now we're back to the main motion as amended, and the amendment is to add school board in between adopted and policy. Discussion. Hearing none. Could I have a show of hands, please?
I'm not talking anymore.
I've done this before.
Yes, you have.
This is not her first rodeo.
So BPAA, school board member authority. And this is an important one for all of us to remember, what are responsibilities and legally, when and where we have power, which is right here. So there wasn't that much editing on this, we just threw in Oyster River Cooperative School Board because we like Oyster River. And if I have a motion? Anne.
I move to approve school board member authority, policy code BBAA for approval.
Second.
Moved by Anne, seconded by Krista. Discussion. Al.
Since I'm new, you can clarify. So there was concern in this that it weakened the right-to-know, but, you know, and you guys can help me out with this. So the sentence in here that we're, the authority of the individual Oyster River Cooperative School Board member is limited to participating in actions taken by the board as a whole when legally in session. So if, by that, that means that we would already have posted, it's, you know, a public meeting. The concern there is that any action we take is by vote. That's, isn't that like what our standard rule is anyway?
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, this, it's, that's implied or by us being in a legal session, that's part of the legal session, right?
Right.
Okay. That's my question.
And that we don't sue many responsibilities that we have delegated to the administration. And the superintendent works for the board as a whole, not for seven people. Further discussion?
I just, the question I think is that if the board, I think it's that final sentence, final part of the sentence in that first paragraph. So is the issue with the right-to-know, that the board could, the individual member of the board could take an action pursuant to an instruction of the official action taken by the board, so that person could do an action on his, her, own, well, pursuant to a direction.
Pursuant to a direction.
Of the board.
Without the direction, the person can't take any action because they have no authority. So the board as a whole is providing that authority.
Okay.
But outside of that, if Krista was doing something without the board's authority, she's just Krista.
Okay.
She's, you know, so it's not, she came into my office and said, Jim, I want you to. I said, well, Krista, you have to bring that with the chair. It has to be a discussion of the full board. I wouldn't, I'd be polite, but I wouldn't do it because.
You just say, get out.
I would just say, I need all of the board's authority, or majority of the board's authority, to move.
But that, I mean, we jumped in on, but that's, so that, it would still come back to a board vote. I mean, it would still be a paper trail back. I mean, ultimately, people would know that we've directed, not to be picky.
Yeah, it's all right.
But like, we've directed you to do something, so it had occurred in public, there is a recorded vote, people would know exactly.
We directed you and Krista to meet with superintendent.
Right.
So.
Which we're going to do.
Further discussion?
See, now they're going to start using your name.
If there's no further discussion, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, motion carries. And then we have a BBBE, unexpired term fulfillment. And there, we shortened it and just went with the law.
And the reason we did is the law just changed in this last session of the legislature, and we haven't got feedback from the School Boards Association in terms of the model policy. So by going with applicable law, we end up being current.
What is the law?
Does it say applicable?
What changed?
Yeah, what is, what is the law?
Let's see if I can remember it, because I just read it a couple of weeks ago. If there's an opening in Madberry, and we happen to have two representatives from Madberry, which we don't, then Madberry's representative would recommend to the board the replacement for Madberry, the same for the, the same for Durham. But because we don't have more than one representative from individual towns, then the chair would recommend to the board the replacement. An absent board action, then it would revert to the towns. So it's changed quite dramatically, and we'll still be waiting for that model policy to come from the School Boards Association.
I just don't want to be the first ones to have to do it.
No.
Motion to approve policy BBBE, unexpired term fulfillment as written.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Anne. Discussion. Hearing none. Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, motion passes. Now, we move to the hard one. Student representative to the school board, BBBF.
I'm just curious to hear why you chose the term representative over the term member.
We discussed the law, which talks a lot about the members of, of the board. Didn't discuss the, the status of the, of the student. And I think it's more semantics than anything, but that you were elected to represent the students to this board. And there is a slight difference between the members and you, namely, you don't get the vote. So.
Which I tried to correct in this policy.
Which I, we worked to correct in this policy.
Yeah, I'm also thrilled that you removed the last line about you being able to get rid of me if you ever get mad at me.
May I, Madam Chair?
Yes.
And John, I also wanted to address the issue of respect. I have had student reps in my entire career. I started them in a couple of districts, and so I recognize the value of the student rep. And the suggestion that you would get to vote in terms of being able to record your vote, I think, is our attempt to escalate your role, not de-escalate it. And so the way it would work, assuming this policy passes, would be the motion passes by a majority of the board or unanimously with the student voting in the affirmative, or if you chose not to vote. But your vote would be recorded because you've had all the input to be able to talk about any issue we have on the table. It seemed sort of trite that you didn't get a chance to say, I agree with this, on record. Now, you still wouldn't be able to do executive sessions because those are usually personnel or fellow student issues that we can't bring you into. So there are issues that legally we can include you in, but we certainly can recognize your vote on any given issue, and so that's why we changed that.
I do understand that there's not much distinction between member and representative, and to be honest, I thought I was running for the position of student representative at the time, so it's really not a big deal. And I'm thrilled that you're adding the ability to have a non-binding vote. Even though it's not a real voice, it's pretty close, and it's not going to make anyone angry. So thank you very much.
We also discussed the Oyster River Cooperative Board may versus will. And our concern there was that Cody Jacobson was a representative for a couple of years because nobody else wanted to run for that position. So we, the subcommittee felt that to put will, if there's nobody that wants to do it, makes, it makes the policy hard to enforce. So that's why we chose may. But anything is up for, up for amendments?
Um, I don't think this was noted, but in our policy meeting, we discussed having a BBBF-r about how the student rep would be elected. And Dr. Morris was going to talk to Principal Allen about that.
Todd and John, actually.
Yeah, and John. So it would be helpful, you know, as a guiding, or, you know, our document to support this policy.
We think that the "R" part of this really belongs to you and the principal.
Okay.
For you to define the process by which a student is elected, so that it's consistent and predictable, and anybody who wants to run for your office can see, okay, this is how I do it. So we wanted to delegate that particular procedure to you and the principal.
Okay. Awesome.
And then you could reach out to the Senate and share that with them and get feedback from them.
Tom?
Just a couple kind of just technical things. I don't know if there'd be any objection to pluralizing representative to make it just, you know, student representative will serve, that seems an odd construction. Student representatives will serve would seem to be more appropriate.
Oh, yeah.
What?
On line three. Is that where you're looking?
Well, I mean, you're talking about representatives in the future. I mean, you need most of the thing.
Okay.
Yep.
So I think, now, is the, is have a non-binding right to vote or the right to a non-binding vote?
I think the way you said it, the second one.
I think that's what it is. It's the, it's a non-binding vote. So.
Have a right to a.
A non-binding vote.
Or have a non-binding vote. You can just say.
You can skip the "right" out of there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have a non-binding vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
How would it read?
We'll have. We'll have a non-binding vote.
Strike the words "right" to.
First paragraph, third line.
All right. So are you moving this for those corrections?
I'm sorry.
Those changes to pluralize representatives, to make it grammatically.
So the motion is to accept BBBF, pluralizing representatives wherever it shows up, and to strike.
Right to.
In the third line, the "right to."
Right to, just right to, yes.
Second.
Which, which will be recorded.
Probably, which?
Which will be recorded.
Or to be recorded in the minutes.
Right to vote, no, take the "right" out, non-binding vote, which will be recorded in the minutes.
That was moved by Tom and seconded by Krista? Okay. Further discussion? Stop gossiping over there.
We're adding S's at the end of every time we're representative, it's plural.
Krista?
It is clear to me that you have put a lot of thought into this policy, and therefore I support it.
For Ed?
What's your feeling about student representatives in the future on the board? I mean, evident, when I, I knew you had a run and it was a fairly.
The toughest race. It was a very, very close race.
Is that just a fluke, or do you think there are going to be representatives that's going to be something that's going to be?
Well, I certainly hope it continues to be a desirable position, and I certainly hope kids continue to be interested in being active, and I hope it continues being competitive.
Yeah. But changing it from may to will, I think it feels better to me to have that changed, but I just want to make sure it doesn't put this kind of strain on the student body to fight, find somebody to run.
Well, we have, we're going to have six, 800 people to choose from, so it shouldn't be that hard. Perhaps we should say, as long as there will choose one or more student representatives, as long as there is a willing person or something along those lines.
If you just leave it.
Or just leave it.
Ann?
I think we need to add the policy that Megan referred to, the "R" policy, the end, where student representatives will be chosen by a vote of the high school student body in accordance with provisions of RSA 194, colon, 23-f, and policy BBF-r.
Where are you?
I am at the second paragraph. If we're going to add that regulation. So I make a motion to amend policy BBF to add.
BBF-r.
BBF to add.
R.
BBF-r.
Dash r.
Dash r. To the second, to the second paragraph.
Yes.
You already have a motion on the floor.
Right.
And you can get lost in motions. So the person who made the motion doesn't see that as a substantive change to his or her motion. They can just take it on as part of their motion without going through multiple votes.
You don't think I can keep track of?
No, it can get really, I mean, one or two, you can follow, there could be a third and a fourth, and, you know, Tom made the motion, if he doesn't see that as substantive change, and the second doesn't, then they can just make it as part of their motion.
Could I accept that as a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Okay.
Then it'll save an extra vote.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, motion passes. And now, John, on the next one, you can. Don't they take effect right away?
Yeah, by. You voted on the amendment, now you need to vote on the main one.
It's close, John.
They accepted it, yes.
They, they moved the amendments. Now you have to move the main motion with amendments.
Okay. We now have the main motion as amended. Any?
All of them.
Oh, my God.
Okay. No objection? Raise your hand. Tom?
I'm fine. Just getting ready to raise my hand.
Could I have a show of hands, please?
And that's the same, same person making the motion, same person making the second one?
Now, does John get to vote?
Yeah. Did you smile?
And John voted in the majority. That's the next one.
Now I have to pay attention.
Didn't before?
I'm just joking.
No sleeping there, John.
School Board Member Ethics, BCA. There was a public comment, a suggestion that we address tweets and whatever those other things are.
We added item number 12 within the month after that incident occurred to address that particular instance.
Does that cover? Is tweets covered in public discourse?
It is.
I think so.
That's public communication.
Okay.
We could add a reference to our electronic communications policy at the bottom if there's a concern. Goes into more detail about what's acceptable.
We have a whole policy on that.
Okay. Does anybody want to move this with the?
Second.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Krista. And you moved it with the cross-reference.
Yes.
Discussion?
No, the electron, oh, I can't forget.
And this motion includes the "R," right?
Right.
If there's no further discussion, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative. Motion passes.
Is John to get recorded?
Yes.
The student representative voted in the affirmative.
Yes.
Just increase her workload.
There's your first, there's your first vote, John.
So how's the?
Feels liberating.
So it's motion pass seven to zero still?
Yes.
Yes.
And then you say with the student.
With the student.
Representative voting in the affirmative.
Might get a shorter version of that.
Students say yes.
Wow.
Okay. Motion to mandate on the master schedule of school board meetings.
We don't, what about?
The last one.
What about the regulation that?
I asked.
Yeah, you don't adopt regulations. I write them and I present them to you, and you get a chance to read them, but it's not your policy. It's my way of enacting your policy.
Master schedule of school board meetings. We were talking about November, right? Because of Thanksgiving. Move the 21st to the 14th?
We talked about that a little bit. We already have a second meeting in November due to the budget, and Thanksgiving is a time that you all want to be with your families, we all want to be with our families, and so in talking to Mira, I asked if she would be willing to bring this before you so that we didn't have to have a meeting on Thanksgiving.
And have it on the 14th or not have it?
Have it on the 14th. We already have a scheduled meeting there for transportation, and if we needed to, we could have business there.
Is there a motion to do that?
Come out.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Ann. And hearing none, discussion, could we have a show of hands? Seven in the affirmative and a student representative noted in the affirmative as well. Motion to consider and amend the budget process calendar timeline to change at additional dates. Seems like a million dates already. If you tell me what that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have begun the budget process internally, and we'll begin the external process tonight in terms of the presentation and discussion that I hope we have later. One of the pieces that we really wanted to push toward the end of the process was the transportation and technology facilities discussion, largely because it involves direct involvement by the ABC Committee in relation to capital improvement. There's a lot of work that Susan Caswell and Ian will be doing in terms of preparing that particular section from ABC, and so we felt like having it on the front end of the process didn't allow time for the kind of discussion we want to have in preparing for that. So we have asked that the October 10th budget workshop related to transportation technology facilities be moved. And that is going to be, Sue, where is it being moved to?
14th.
November 28th.
November 28th. Thank you. Appreciate that.
14th and 20th.
Well, 20, 20 will be a regular meeting.
Right, transportation to that, on that regular.
Oh, okay.
You're splitting it up.
Right. Thanks, Megan.
I mean, the schedule, when we set it up last year, was pretty aggressive. Start really early, it's really too early. So we're just moving some things back. And then can I just add one other thing? In my meeting with the ABC Committee the other night, they asked that we could add their meetings to your calendar. Would you be okay with that, if I did that? Okay, there's three meetings that I'll add, an update, and get that out to you on October 9th, November 26th, and December 3rd. And that's for the purpose of forming a report to you mostly. So they just asked that those be included in your calendar.
Did you say that November 19th again?
Oops, sorry, I missed. Okay, so October 9th, November 19th, November 26th, and December 3rd. And then just one other correction. We've changed the location of our workshop on the 2nd to the Madberry Town Complex.
Is it the Madry Town Hall?
Town Hall, yeah.
Okay. Just making sure I'm in the right place at the right time.
It's a confusing complex.
To the Town Hall.
It's a Town Hall, I guess. Is that what they call it, the Town Hall?
It's a big white building, right? Okay, good.
In terms of, anybody who wants to come from the public, it's going to be October 2nd from?
October 2nd from 8 to 4.
Thank you.
And we have to vote on this?
These are your public calendars, so they do require board affirmation.
Could I have a motion, please?
Come out.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Megan. Discussions? Hearing none. Could we have a show of hands, please? Hearing none, could we have a show of hands, please?
Thank you.
Seven in the affirmative.
With the student voting in the affirmative, yes.
With students voting in the affirmative. District reports.
Wow.
You know, they have a bet on how soon we can end.
There is no Assistant Superintendent Report this evening. I do want to mention something that I didn't have listed on the agenda. Goes back to conversation that Chris, a question that Krista had related to our playground inspection. And as a result of the review of our manifest, Megan asked a question that sparked that I needed to inform the board. What Krista asked in one of the meetings was, do we inspect our playgrounds? I can say now officially, we do inspect our playgrounds. And that Brian, our maintenance director, has created a monthly format where we have documented that the playground has been inspected. For safety reasons and common sense in terms of our insurance, it makes sense. And I just wanted to make sure the board knew we followed through on that. The other piece that I can share tonight is that the New Hampshire Schools Administrative Association has been in district. They were in district yesterday and today. And that's related to the capacity study of our schools, which has a direct relationship to the conversation around whether we can take in tuition students from surrounding communities. I also would add, and I think actually was addressed in public comment, that part of the capacity study does involve another analysis of our enrollment. So we'll use the New Hampshire Association of School Administrators data as well as the Long Range Planning Committee data, as well as our local calculated data by our principals. So we have three quality pieces of data to base our path on. And so, since that came up in public comment, I thought very appropriate to share that today. On October 3rd's meeting, consultant that we will be working with, Mary J. McCollum, will be here to talk about future search. So we'll be starting to have that public conversation. And in your packet, you have the Long Range Planning Committee's update on enrollment. That gives you three different pieces of data again. It tells you what's happening in the school, it tells you what the principals thought in the spring, what actually happened, as well as the Long Range Planning Committee's information. So you have, again, multiple sources to kind of digest. And I think, Madam Chair, that is my report.
This is a good time to mention that we don't, we're down a person on that committee?
It is a good time to mention we're down on that.
We're looking for volunteers for the Long Range Planning Committee and if possible, a representative from Lee.
Did we have?
We did have a name, I called and. Okay.
Did we have someone resign recently?
Yes.
Were not reappointed, didn't want to be reappointed, I think.
More accurate.
It was not our chairperson or, yes?
No.
Okay.
Should we submit any to you if there's anyone interested?
Yes, please.
So if you're interested in serving on that committee, please send your interest to Maria. She would be more than willing to take your name into consideration.
Yes, I will.
There is no Business Administrator Report because Sue Caswell will be working with me on the budget process. And so, we can move on.
Student Senate report.
Student Senate just finished up Spirit Week and as Spirit Weeks go, it was successful. We made a lot of money at the homecoming dance and we're currently looking forward to what we'll be doing for the rest of the year.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
Not for me.
Okay, announcements and commendations from the district.
Todd Allen from the high school. I'm going to apologize, I'm going to go on for a little bit tonight, so bear with me. First of all, open house tomorrow night starts at, the open house officially begins at 6:30, but the jazz band will be performing in the cafeteria starting at 6 o'clock. So we invite people to come in and hear the jazz band play. There will be some refreshments there as well as children's schedules. So if you don't have a copy of your child's schedule, you can pick it up. And basically, the evening involves following a modified version of your student's schedule. So you can meet all the teachers and should be a good time had by all. So I invite everybody to be there. It's usually a very well-attended event. Secondly, you may recall last June, Corey Parker and I came to you to talk with you about the field project that we were proposing, getting some fundraising going on. We're going to be having a kickoff meeting to, bringing together all of the coaches as well as, we've invited all the ORYA people and all the other various recreation organizations. It's this coming Monday night, September 24th, at 6:30 in the cafeteria. Our intent is to share with people some of the history of where, what's brought us to the point we're at, but also share with them the various designs that have already been created as well as the cost estimates that we've been giving. We got updated cost data from the engineers last week. So we can kind of begin to kind of create that plan. But we welcome anybody from the community who'd like to be there to kind of hear what we have to say and then also obviously join in the process because the more the merrier as far as that goes.
What time did you say?
6:30 in the cafeteria here at the high school. As John mentioned, the last week was Spirit Week and I've, this would be my second, second go around with Spirit Week. So I don't have a lot of experience with it, but I did want to commend the Student Senate for the work that they did. One issue in particular, which I'm not going to give a lot of detail on, but in the past, there's been some question about the style of dancing that goes on at our dances. And just to kind of put it bluntly, I mean, obviously the adults think one, it's sort of like, you know, the, what's the, oh, what's that movie? Footloose, you know, that kind of thing. So the generational differences and we've worked that issue over the last couple of years. This year in particular, I want to commend the Senate for really stepping up. In particular, Zach Jones and Pranav Nanda, if you haven't had a chance to see, they made a series of group dancing promotional videos that were put on our Facebook page. We had an assembly on Monday of Spirit Week, they actually demonstrated to the entire student body. I was dragged into it, so it was not pretty. But we did the Waka Waka, we did the Soldier Boy, we did, let's see, the Cat Daddy. But what made it even more impressive was the night of the dance, the homecoming dance on that Friday. They got up on the stage in the multipurpose room and actually led the entire room in a whole series of dances. In particular, Jenny Taylor was involved in it, Zach Jones, Pranav Nanda, Sam Lewis. But lots of kids got involved and, you know, I was a little nervous about how kids were going to receive this sort of new tone. But it was, every kid that was there and every adult that was there said it was one of the most fun dances that Dave Chaperoned in a long time. So commendations to the Student Senate for really making that happen. Because I think had it come down, as Mr. Allen said, you can't dance a certain way, that would have been a very different tone. And it was really, it was very positive. So I just want to commend everybody for that. And the videos are great. I did want to also mention, because I know John can't mention this himself, last, on September 12th, the National Merit Scholar semifinalists were announced. Just so you understand, there are 16,000 kids in the entire United States to get this status. And Mr. Parsons here is one of those that achieved that status. Yes. So anyway, so I just want to mention that. And actually, I got an email from John Parsons' former science teacher from Oyster River Middle School. He was a National Merit Scholar semifinalist from, in Hampton in 1969, not to mention how old he is. And he just wanted to say, from one John Parsons to another, nice going. Okay, next, I did want to just talk a little bit about a, about a medical issue that came up at the high school last Tuesday. Obviously, it was one of our shop teacher, Mike Troy, had a medical incident that required some pretty serious attention. And I do want to take a moment to just, first of all, commend the students in Mike Troy's F-period class that really stepped up to the plate. And without getting into a lot of details, because obviously there's some personal medical stuff in there. One of the things that the first responders said was that the reactions of our students in that moment is really what saved the day. It's very emotional, I have to be honest. But the kids stepped up and as a result, they got the school nurse down there, Dina Richards, who was able, she brought the AED, she was able to use it. And Amy McPhee, one of our physical education teachers, got involved and it was a very positive result. Mike is in the hospital now and again, I won't get into a lot of the details, but there's, certainly it's a very positive, positive outcome. And just to give you an idea of how amazing this was, I was talking to one of the medical people who indicated that the type of episode that Mike had, you know, the survival rate is very, very small, like 5%. And care in that moment is what did it. And our kids and our teachers stepped up, so nice job, everybody.
Jay Rashad, the principal of the middle school. Just real quick, if you were driving down a neighborhood last night, you might have noticed a little traffic congestion. That was our school open house. It was very well-attended, it was an exceptional effort of our teachers, parents and students. So I want to thank everyone that came out. I also want to thank Dr. Morse, he got to attend his first home recipe TO meeting. I was a little disappointed, no one asked him any tough questions. Did a great job. And I also want to commend Doris Demers, new leader of our cafeteria. I've been really impressed in terms of the menu selection, it's something that the students have noticed. So great job, Doris. And on a lighter note, I hope somebody has that video of Principal Allen doing the Soldier Boy someplace, but I'd love to see that. Thank you.
Could be an administrator report at the next meeting, John.
John, you got it?
No, I don't, I don't think it would be good to show. I love you, this girl.
Can we get a daycare?
Good evening, everyone. Carrie Vaseh from Mastway. I just wanted to let everyone know that last week, we also had our school curriculum night. It was well-attended by many parents. And it was an evening designed for parents to hear specifically about classroom curriculum, grade level curriculum, how teachers are managing classrooms and expectations for the year. So we had a great opportunity to visit with parents, one-on-one. And I was very impressed with the presentations that not only the classroom teachers put on, which they did a great job and thorough job, but also our specialists really shined and took a good chunk of time also to share with different grade levels of parents the importance of the arts and the importance of exercise in their kids' days and that sort of thing. So it was really a team effort, it made me very proud of the Mastway staff. And I hope we were able to really communicate that to parents. We've had a lot of excitement going on in the school this week with students in the third and fourth grade, starting up band lessons and instrumental lessons. And chorus started today, so very exciting, very musical in our school. We look forward to hearing the progression over the year. And tomorrow, we're actually having our first PTO meeting at 9:30 in the North Commons. And we welcome anyone to attend and hear what's on the agenda for this coming year and hopefully see some new and familiar faces. Thanks.
I guess I should get this right. I'm Dennis Harrington, Principal of Moharamet. I'd like to commend the staffs of Moharamet and Mastway for the way they used this professional development time on the 12th. We worked together on the beginnings of opening the Common Core and used the results of the summer work that was done by two very dynamic committees.
Thank you.
I'd just like to announce that our new food service director, Doris Demers, is here this evening. And if she'd like to come up and introduce herself to the community?
Good evening, I'm Doris Demers, happy to be here. It's been an interesting few weeks. I have to say, it's been pretty hectic, but probably no different than any other food service program in the first few weeks of school across this country. I'm still in the observing phases to see how things work here at Oyster River, but I'm really happy to see what hard-working staff I have and how dedicated they are to the children. Our focus, we're already focusing on farm-to-school. We've already had local corn, cucumbers, zucchini. We've had cherry tomatoes, squash and pumpkin from Moharamet's own gardens. And another, I attended the farm-to-school conference in Burlington, Vermont, partly in generosity of the Sustainability Committee and really amazing resources from that with Dennis Harrington. It was really wonderful. I was, I felt really blessed to be able to go there. Our new point-of-sale system is up and running. And, good news, the online payment system is activated and working well. It's sendmoneytoschool.com and parents now are getting notices if their students' balances fall below a dollar. Every, three times a week, Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. So, and it has all the information they need to go online and make payments if they choose to. Or they can just use it, send money into school with their child. But parents are already taking advantage of that. We also have, with our new point-of-sale system, Meal Magic, we have applications that can actually be put in online. People don't have to send them in with their children now. They can actually apply online, it's more confidential. It's at schoolapp.com, sorry, lunchapp.com, APP. And people are, parents have already been taking advantage of that as well. I think that's going to be really good for our district. Parents will feel safer not having to send that in. Currently, we're at 11% free and reduced, which I think is higher than in the past. But we do have some applications that will expire soon, so hopefully parents will be taking care of that. One of my goals is to look at participation and hopefully market the program and get parents feeling more comfortable and happy with our program, our new menu choices, and raise participation and make things better so that children will all want to eat at school.
Thank you, Doris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Eastman, Assistant Superintendent. I just wanted to share that there's now a Common Core page right, or a section right on the homepage on the district website. Kathleen Young, I commend her. We worked together in making sure that it was an organized and intuitive piece on the website. Still a little under construction, but it talks about standards, the common questions that all of you received a couple of weeks ago, resources that contains links to the core, more information about assessment, about smarter balanced. Last Monday, I was able to attend an update to the New Hampshire Department of Education on smarter balanced and where we stand. They also reinforced some technology requirements and recommendations on how to support students taking the assessment online. And we'll have pieces on what's happening with Common Core here at Oyster River. One of the things that we're looking to do in the next month is to start doing community public forums to invite the public to talk about the core and what it means. I know the teachers are excited and have been attending professional development this week at the Lee Safety Complex on differentiated instruction. And as always, I'm always impressed with the level of professionalism of our staff. And I think people were really rallied around the idea of implementing some of the strategies. But also, I've been encouraging them to try out new things and be really creative and integrate different pieces that maybe they haven't done in the past. And what I'm hoping is to encourage the community to allow them to take some chances on behalf of improving student learning and for the community to give them that option of taking a chance with the student best interest at heart. And so, I think a lot of that comes from the community forum and informing you what's going on and being proactive about what we're. going on and being proactive about what we're trying to accomplish and explore. And at the high school, some of that, off the top of my head, is this idea of a flipped classroom. What is it if we were to tape the lecture in some subjects and allow for more time of exploration and the teacher being there to facilitate and help students that often struggle at home on homework, they now have that opportunity in, in the classroom and have that expert at hand when they explore content. So I look forward to the community forums and I'm looking forward to my teachers having this opportunity to take a little risk, calculated, but hoping to engage students really authentically around the curriculum, so, excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
What Doris didn't tell you is that she came to the food-to-school conference the day after she was offered the position. What she also didn't tell you is she was the rock star at that conference. Everyone around her was coming up, not showing pictures of their grandchildren, but asking her for advice on how to deal with certain issues. So I think we made a good choice.
Thank you. She came from Kittery. How can you go? Go right. Board announcements and commendations. Ann.
I attended the PTO meeting last night with Jay and, and Dr. Morse, and it was great attendance. And on behalf of our PTOs, I imagine this applies to Dennis and probably Carrie as well, that the schools are trying to assemble their school directories. And so if you would please, as a family, submit what information you want to have, go into the directory, do that promptly. I am historically very guilty of either failing to do it or doing it very late, and that then causes the directory to come out very late. So the middle school and the elementary schools produce these directories, which are optional for you to participate in, but they're a great resource. Also, the PTOs look for volunteers, so if you haven't volunteered in the past, doesn't mean you can't volunteer in the future. It's a great way to connect with your community. If you're new to the community, it's a wonderful outreach to meeting folks and, and meeting your children's parent, your children's friends' parents and even their friends. So I'd encourage you to do that. I did it when my kids were young and it was awesome. But really what I want to say is congratulations to Chairman, Chairwoman Barth's grandson, Oyster River's Cam Barth, who won the Bobcat Invitational this week, this week? This week. And here he is in the paper, and so I will pass this on to Chairwoman Barth and her, her great gene pool that produced a very fast runner, and we look forward to even more success. You can come up again.
The other thing, it just really, it was really cool on Saturday, our boys' team, as you didn't know, has won two consecutive state championships back-to-back and they had a bunch of kids graduate. So going into the Bobcat, Oyster River was a very unknown squad. The number one ranked team in Division One was there when it cut it, the number one ranked team in Division Two was there, and our team beat both of them and walked away. So it was, it was a remarkable day, not only by Cam, but by the entire top seven. And actually, our girls' team, which was, is largely freshman girls, came in fifth out of 18 schools in a very competitive meet, so it was a great day for all of our, our Oyster River runners, but Cam definitely had a great run.
Thank you. Anybody else? Krista?
I just wanted to take a moment to commend Lori Grant and all of the teachers with the Strafford Learn Account Center at Pep. It always amazes me that they can take these little tiny three-year-olds, and I think my son looks big when he leaves the house, but when he comes here with all the seniors and all the way down to freshmen, he looks like a little tiny ant with all the rest of the kids. But they do a fantastic job with the kids. They, they love to learn and it just amazes me every day, and I'm very appreciative for the opportunity to have that kind of program here. And also, we did get an announcement today that we have a high school intern, which is very exciting, in the Pep classroom, so, thank you to her for volunteering to do that position, and I think it's going to be good for the students, I think it's going to be good for her, and I think it's great for the Pep program. And then also, I had the wonderful opportunity to attend the curriculum night at Massway, which is phenomenal because I think it's the only time in the whole year that you really get to have all of the staff members of Massway in front of you to show you how many people are in that school to support the students. And it's a great night where you, I mean, we, we have the open houses where you get to go in with your child and they get to show you their cubby and their hook and all that important stuff. But then, this night is without the kids, so you really understand what your child is learning, what the curriculum is that they're going to cover from September to May, and how they're going to get there. And for me, as a parent, that's important. So, thank you to Carrie, thank you to our staff for giving us that opportunity to understand how our children are learning.
Thank you. Ann.
Second turn.
Yeah.
Just following up with what Krista said, for parents, either new middle school parents or new high school parents, the middle school and the high school do a similar program where they allow you to go within your child, in the middle school, your child's team, and you go from class to class. So you meet the teacher and you hear about the curriculum. And at the high school, same thing. You, you get to be your student for a night where you follow through their schedule. So for parents who have never gone, or who have children who just are entering the high school, the middle school, so, it, it was yesterday for the middle school, but the high school's coming up, and it's a great opportunity to see what a day in the life of your child is like.
Anybody else? Then we'll move right along to discussion items.
And that would be me.
Mr. Superintendent.
Tonight, we begin the long process of putting together the FY14 budget. In this district, it is a long process. You'll start a month and a half before most people do in terms of working your way through this process. I really want to emphasize some things before I get too far into my discussion. Every dollar that you spend represents a service to students. So when we talk about accountability and we talk about our spending, we talk about how it impacts students like John, who come to school every single day. The budget also represents your priorities as a board. So it's, it probably represents your actualization of your policies. And I know that senior members of the board have gone through some pretty adjuvant budgets and new members of the board, I would not be telling you the truth if I didn't tell you this was going to be a hard process as well. We really have so much to celebrate in the district, and, you know, it probably is appropriate that this discussion follows the news from our principals and our assistant superintendent and our food service director this evening, because there's quantitative data where we can measure, test scores, attendance, participation, but there's also a qualitative aspect to our organization that you can't put your hands around and say, there, that's working, that's better, that's improved. And one of the things that sometimes gets lost in the process of doing the kind of work that you're about to begin is that all of this discussion around numbers and budgets really center around what you as a community, three communities, want to do for your students. So historically, this body has developed budgets that have produced the hiring of excellent teachers, great leadership team. I have to say, if I were going to go up to the podium and do commendations, it would go to Sue Caswell, who sat through every single meeting with me in the last two weeks. And then I would follow that up with commendations to every single principal, director, or assistant superintendent who sat through those initial meetings. So we've been doing it for about two weeks. And the reason I asked the chair if we could have this discussion tonight was because October 2nd isn't aired on TV. And I think tonight really sets the, the stage, if you will, for the work that we'll be doing in October and November and December before we get to a deliberate obsession. And my experience as a superintendent is budget development is never easy. If the money is flowing, it's about where the money flows to. If the money's not flowing, as we face in our system today, then it's about how do we hang on to what's important and not lose what we value and treasure for our students in the process of maintaining a budget. So as we enter this process, I just want to state the obvious, so forgive me if I am, and I don't mean to be lecturing anyone, but I think it's important for the community to understand the work that you're about to do. And it is the hardest work that you do as board members. Absolutely. Somebody, somewhere will take offense to a recommended cut. Somebody, somewhere, somewhere will take offense to a way a statement is made. And somebody, somewhere will say, you know, I'm glad they're having that discussion. You know, I wish that we could talk about that more in depth. That's an important direction for us to consider. So I approach the budget as a series of questions initially, and then conversations, and then ultimately recommendations. So I, I see tonight as a chance to say, we have every right to be proud. Our staff is doing a great job. And as one of our administrators said to me, we're not perfect, we have places to grow and improve, but we have a record of accomplishment that we shouldn't diminish in the process of trying to figure out what we can afford. And I think that's a very important part, and in fact, I added this one set of conversation I'm having with you now as a direct result of one of the administrators coming to me today and saying, don't forget that this is about what we want to do for youngsters, and the numbers have to serve that purpose. So let's just take a second and think about some of the things we're very, very proud of. You know, in 2011, this high school graduated every single student. Unfortunately, Todd tells me, we lost one this year because the person moved out of state and he hasn't a way of completing that child's program. So we're at 99.3%. That is incredible. Perfection to near perfection. Our SAT scores are way above state average, and the number of kids who are taking the SAT in our school district is increasing. Normally, when you have increased participation, you see a diminished score. So kids are, are venturing into SAT territory boldly. You know, maybe it's nominal and, and what, the growth has been flat, but it's still 50 points higher than the state average. So we, we really should applaud the work that's going on at the high school. But it's not just at the high school. My opening day, I talked about our math scores, K through eight. The middle school, under Jay's leadership, has some of the highest math performance in the state. Not the highest, but some of the highest. And people turn to Jay, the staff, they try to figure out how they're doing that. If we look at our reading scores, elementary, middle school and high school, they're some of the highest in the state. So all of that, we can grab on to as a quantitative piece of data to say, I think we're heading down the right path. But tonight, we had anecdote after anecdote that really speak to the climate of the system. You know, the pride that Todd showed and the emotion that he showed about an incident that had students not step forward, could have been a tragedy, really speaks to the climate of the high school. The work that happened last night in the, the open house at the middle school where the art teacher, teacher took leadership from around the district and turned them into pieces of welcoming art, speaks to the climate of the district. So as we go through that hard work of, of doing these numbers, we got to remember that we have so many places that we can be proud of and feel good about and not let the budget process tear us apart as we try to move forward. So that's my opening to our budget process. And like so many said tonight, elementary, middle school and high school, we have an incredible workforce. We have great teachers, but we also have great support staff. So far, like the administrators, I have been impressed with everybody I have met. I also want to share with you that every person I've met individually from the community, the message has been the same message. The message is, we like the product that's happening in Oyster River's school, school district. We don't want to diminish the quality of work that you're doing, and we're asking you to be accountable for the funds that we give you and to try to contain escalating costs, which in my mind is not an unreasonable request. We have been in a, well, the recession officially ended vis-à-vis economists, but the result of the recession, which really is the, the worst recession since the Great Depression, has been diminished support from federal and state coffers. And in Oyster River, where so little of your funds come from the federal and state coffers, they really are coming from the local community. So I think the push-pull that you've been feeling as a board really is a direct result of the pain that people are feeling in trying to meet their family needs and at the same time wanting to support a school system they're very proud of. So let me talk a little bit about what I think forms the context of our conversation this year. We can decrease costs, but I think the other piece of our equation, which may not materialize in time to have a significant impact on, on fiscal year 14, is we can also increase revenue. It is not without controversy that we are entering into conversations with Newmarket. There are people who do not want Oyster River to bring in large quantities of tuition students. On the other hand, like Krista said at the last meeting, all students are important. And Newmarket is in a tough spot. They have to make a decision. Are they going to build a new high school at the tune of tens of millions of dollars? Or do they look to a neighbor who has space in their high school and say, what do you think about a long-term relationship, a long-term exclusive relationship with your school system? So you can count on our students and our revenue? And the key word here is, all revenue is good revenue in these times, and we have space at the end. So having these conversations does not mean that this body has made a decision. It means it's doing the prudent thing and reaching out and saying, yes, that makes sense to have this conversation. And this conversation will absolutely be done in a much more public forum where we engage the community and have them ask the questions. But quite frankly, we haven't had our meetings yet to even be able to have the informational sessions that would give our citizens information that's meaningful. So tonight, I just want to make sure for the record that everybody understands that this body has made no decisions, other than to say, please have the conversations because we see it as a potential revenue source, one level. But let's go back to student programming as the other level, because we need a certain number of students in this high school to provide the programming that Todd is proud of and our teachers are proud of. And if we lose students at any significant level from this high school, then you as a board will be faced, and the community will be faced with, the loss of program that you so value or incredible escalating costs. So Newmarket is an important conversation for us to be having. They want to have an exclusive conversation with us, a long-term conversation with us, where this body can depend on a revenue stream that could help support our programming. And quite honestly, in that process of bringing, sustaining our program and bringing in new revenue, we also can help alleviate the pressure that we're feeling from our member communities. So it may seem in this conversation that I've come to a conclusion, I'm just telling you the reality of my experience because I've gone through this. And this is an important conversation to us to have, but ultimately, it's yours in the three towns to decide whether this makes sense to Oyster River Cooperative School District. Another source of revenue that we've seen increasing is Barrington students. Now Barrington is not interested in an exclusive arrangement with us. They don't want to have that conversation, but they do want to have the conversation that says, we would like to send more, more students to you based on our parents and stu-, their- Another source of revenue that we've seen increasing is Barrington students. Now Barrington is not interested in an exclusive arrangement with us. They don't want to have that conversation, but they do want to have the conversation that says, we would like to send more students to you based on our parents and their children making the decision to choose you. So they're a choice community. It's a different conversation. And currently, we've attracted over 60, Todd?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four students here, and they are paying tuition to us based on the agreement we had. And then Todd had informed me that Deerfield was also interested, and they actually made a visit this week.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. They're making a visit tomorrow to see if this would make a viable option for them. Now, geographically, that becomes, you know, an issue for them, because they're not contiguous like Newmarket or Barrington. Interesting development this year is we actually had a parent who was denied a superintendent's agreement to come to our district, say, I'll pay full freight. I want my youngster to come to Oyster River so much, to the high school so much, that I'm willing to pay the tuition. What that tells me is, there's a market in our area where we could compete with the Cobrahns and private schools that we haven't begun to think about tapping. I put out in my interview that international students, international students could, would find Oyster River an incredible school system to participate in. I actually managed to get that going in Maine in the school system. I was superintendent of for 12 years, and it started just as I was leaving. We brought in the first two students. So international students are a possibility for revenue for us. Today, yesterday, Sue and I got into a pretty good discussion about another revenue stream that we hadn't thought about, which is preschool and our kindergarten program. There is a demand out there for us to provide all-day kindergarten. I was talking to a parent this week who said, Jim, Lee as a town is changing demographically. We used to be able to predict that one parent would be staying home and one parent would be working. What she shared with me, and this is just anecdotal, is that she sees more and more two-working families, which means all-day kindergarten could be a possibility. And the way I was framing it with Sue is, could it be a possibility that we go to all-day kindergarten and instead of a parent paying a private provider, or having an option for a parent to pay a private provider, or pay the public school system for that additional time, since it's not a required program? So, you know, whether that's viable or not is worth investigating, but I'm sensing a demand for us to think about all-day kindergarten, which doesn't necessarily have to be paid as part of the tax burden of the three towns. We could increase the size of pre-kindergarten by 25 percent and take in the revenue that currently is being drawn from the Learning Center, Stratford Learning Center. We could become the enterprise for pre-kindergarten. Now, our special ed population, we have to provide. Our regular ed population would be an option. Now, in having that conversation, I had that conversation with a special ed director. It could be problematic in terms of the ratio of special needs to regular ed, and so that is a conversation we've been having this week. And then finally, right from the very beginning, Carolyn Eastman, the assistant superintendent, had shared with me that we have a staff member who has grant-writing experience, but they're not employed as a grant writer. And this is a person who's interested in writing grants for the district, because she believes in the district, and she lives in the district, and she's employed by the district. So repurposing a staff member so that they could be writing grants potentially has an outcome that could generate funds for the district. So I was debating whether I put decrease of cuts on the front end of this, or revenue potential on the front end of this. And in deciding that revenue potential, at least that's a tone that's potentially positive. Because the next part is, we all take a deep breath, and we talk about where we possibly could see decreases. So I'm under the assumption, and this is a really important assumption, that the board made a decision that they wanted to see what it would look like. And I don't know if this is the right phraseology, so I'm going to need guidance from the board when I'm done. That they're expecting that the proposed fiscal year 14 budget is equal to the current fiscal year 13 budget. Now, in my definition of equal, 38 million equals 38 million. So Sue and I have been working under that assumption, and as I've met with the individual administrators, I've been reinforcing that that's what I think the board meant. But here's what we learned today. So Sue did a pretty detailed piece of work for you in the spring that said, if we were going to bring the budget in flat, we would be chasing after $700,000 in cuts. Well, today, she calculated the latest retirement increased cost to the district. That increased cost is $500,000. She did not have that information when she gave you the estimate of what a flat budget would equal. So the legislature passed an increase, and this is administrative costs for the retirement system. Our retired teachers don't see it in their paycheck. This is how much the state of New Hampshire is charging school systems to be able to administer a retirement system. So when I first was going through this budget before this increase, I was saying to Sue, what's that? And she would tell me what it was. I said, that's an enormous amount of money. Well, it just became a far more enormous amount of money as of today. So you add that to the 700,000 that you saw last spring. So then there are other predictable staff increases. You already have community-approved negotiation documents that impact salary increases and benefit increases. What you attempted to do in August with me is say, maybe we can absorb those increases if we can get age and service-eligible employees to consider retirement. So as I said here tonight, my concern is, so far, we've had one employee step forward. Now, I extended the date to October 30th because of the unions convinced me that they couldn't get this aid information back quick enough to be able to make informed decisions. But I also want to say that if we don't get voluntary retirements, and 80 percent of our budget is related to personnel, then we may be looking at layoffs. It's not my first choice. My first choice was to reach out and see if we could entice people to retire. That's a pretty scary word. So the natural question would be, you know, how would we go about that? Well, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't go about it because we like so-and-so, we don't like another person. It would be based on contract, the union contracts. It would be based, going back to Ed's question earlier, about what happens if state law doesn't say something, policy prevails. This is one of those cases where policy would prevail. You have a class-sized policy, that's IIB, very, pretty straightforward policy. It would be based on the needs of our students, and it also would be based on whether programming is being supported by the number of youngsters who are going to a particular program. But before we get there, before that kind of takes on a life of its own, we also have operational cost efficiencies. Again, this body last year did something that was proactive. You hired Siemens to do an assessment of the operating systems in this building. They came back with a report, and you authorized that work to be done. We anticipate in the FY14 budget that that will realize about a $50,000 savings. We will see probably another significant savings in FY15. So we're making an estimate that we think the total savings over the two years will be about $90,000. But it's assuming that fuel costs don't go up. And we're lucky in the sense that both of the major buildings are running on natural gas. If we were running on oil right now, we would be crippled. You also made a decision here a couple of weeks ago to have Siemens go out and analyze the other buildings, and that's going on as we speak. So at some point, we'll have a report back that says, do this, do this, do this, and it will result in savings at the middle school and two elementary schools that probably, as we're seeing tonight, won't impact until we hit FY15. But part of the work you're doing is being proactive. And as a result of staying to a capital replacement plan for your buses, we're seeing a significant drop in the maintenance of buses. So being conscientious about where you can control things proactively before we reach into something that truly impacts students is critical. Big questions on the table, really scary questions, are about contracted service. You have neighbors who contract services in the support realm, food service, transportation, and maintenance. I don't know that that conversation has ever happened at this level, but I think it's a question that we have to ask in terms of the FY14 budget, at least having answers. So the reason I wanted tonight was to put all of this right out in the public's airwave, because like Maria, I truly, truly believe that these are conversations, these are difficult conversations, that should be aired publicly. Not try to hide anything. Make sure that the communities know, no decisions have been made, but the tough questions you face in the next several months before you present a budget will be excruciatingly difficult from a lot of different angles, but I think we all deserve it. I deserve to make the kind of recommendations I'll make in the end to you in public, so they're aired in public. Now, I'll tell you that whatever decisions we make, somebody is going to say, oh, that's the worst decision you could make. But I also will tell you that there is really a lot of pressure from other elected bodies. We did get a letter from Lee, the town of Lee. Maria and I attended a meeting in Madberry, and my conversations in Durham with our town manager are pretty strident in terms of trying to insist that we consider the most effective and efficient and cost-efficient ways of doing business during these tough times. So it's a tough balance for all of you. Student needs in a great school system, that's our job. We're not, we're the Board of Education, not the Board of Taxation. But we also have to recognize that everything we do has a cost to it, and whether we feel like we can maintain a particular program is really going to be the conversations that we all have together in the next three months. So I just, that's my piece of it, Maria. And I would open up to board questions, and I would ask the board if they want specific information for October 2nd in advance. If you know there's something you want, and you can tell us right now, and Sue will make sure we have it. Or you could wait till October 2nd, and we'll have each administrator do their presentation. But just remember that the purpose of October 2nd isn't to give you a budget that we're approving. It's to begin the process, and so you'll see pretty hefty increases in it. And over the course of the next three months, we'll figure out, you know, how much of that we really can afford.
We can email our questions.
Email your questions. You could ask them right here, that's okay, but email them to me, please. Not to each other.
Ann.
Jim, when do we expect the capacity study to be completed?
It'll be done by the end of October, and so we'll have that as well as the, as well as what else is coming in October. Have the capacity study.
Facility study. Facility study. So we won't have that for October?
Oh, the retirement incentive, that's what I was thinking of. Both of those will come by the end of October.
Just to be clear, so that when we mutually had the motion to have a flat budget, the assumption was that we'd have to cut 700,000 out of the budget, because there'd be automatic increases, so to stay level, we'd have to. And what you're saying is, we'd have that 700,000 plus another 500,000, so 1.2 million would have to be cut.
Exactly.
Is that right?
Yes, thank you, Tom. The escalating cost right now between the retirement system and the numbers that Sue gave you would mean that you would have to cut 1.2 million dollars to stay level with this year.
Tell me what the 500,000 that the state wants, is that to increase benefits for teachers?
It is not.
Just for them to have it?
Sue, you do a better job of talking about the retirement system, because I get a little irritated. She does it very, very professionally.
I'll try, I'll try. Part of that increase is from what you had last year, and you had to absorb from last-minute actions of the legislature to shift the cost, their cost, to you. So we absorb that, but we also have to bring that forward. So that's part of it. The other part is an increase in the rate on both the employee and the teacher section. And then as the salaries increase, the amount you pay increases, because it's based on the salaries. So it's kind of like three whammies on that benefit. And that portion is what every district pays, in addition to our own contributions. Each employee contributes towards New Hampshire Retirement. That goes in their own fund, and then there's a fee that each salary is assessed that goes towards the New Hampshire Retirement System. So that's the fee that has been increased.
I want to know how much of that is what the state is squeezing us for?
Well, it used to be, they used to support us with 35 percent, but they're no longer supporting us at all with that. It's all coming from local taxpayers that support us.
So Sue, is this 500,000 going forward, or are we making up?
We're also making up for what we lacked last year.
So next year, what will we possibly be looking at?
Well, the rate will be the same. It's a two-year rate set by the legislature. It will be an increase in whatever the increase in salaries are. So salaries impact that increase, but it'll be the same rate, the same rate that we're assessed on. Does that explain it?
Yeah. Like Maria's question was, does any of that end up with the retirees? And the answer is no.
No.
It's $500,000 of increased administrative costs to run the system, and to make up for underfunding in the past.
Right. And the system is, it's no secret, they're struggling, like every system, I think, around. They haven't, the actuaries weren't quite on when they made their projections, so the rates were always set based on actuary figures, and now they're finding out that they were a little low on their rate, so they have to make up for it. And I think they want to be at, what is it, 75 to 90 percent whole, is what they say, and they're somewhere around 50 to 60. So they have to make up for that in some way.
So based on that, we should anticipate increases every two years until they reach their desired goal?
I would say.
So a pretty significant amount of the budget is uncontrolled cost ultimately?
And they're also looking at the way the system currently is funded. It's a defined benefit plan, something that, you know, doesn't really exist that much anymore, other than retirement system, state retirement system. So they're looking at options to make it a different type of a system for new people coming into the system. But in the meantime, they still have to provide what they've been obligated to provide to those that are in the system now. So they're looking at other options, but I suspect we'll be seeing increases until they make it up.
Makes you glad?
Oh.
Boy, you've just really added weight to the line that the only certainty in life is that there's a lot of uncertainty. And I think we just saw that. But that conversation that we had, I think it was in June, about the budget, has really haunted me for the better part of two months, to be honest. When we had that conversation, and Leon brought that up, the assumption was that our district was going to decline from 2,000 to 1,600, and we were getting ourselves used to the idea of living with less. And so by having a flat budget going out, we would learn what it was like and begin to prepare ourselves to live with less. But, I mean, as you've already said, that's not necessarily a true assumption. There is another flip side to this, that if we're able to gather revenue, you know, then potentially, why would we need to make such drastic draconian cuts? So I think that, you know, as we go into this budget, I know we have to make a final number, but that assumption that we initially made to say that it had to be 38 million dollars exactly last year is not a valid assumption. We do-
We do have some choices. And what I'm worried about is that, I mean, $1.2 million in cuts is a lot of cuts. And that is a lot of programs to go. And if we're going to generate revenue, what's having kids come to our school is the attractive programs that we have in our school. If you begin to remove what makes us attractive, you really run the risk of going into like a spiraling down. I mean, if we become less attractive, then we can attract less revenue. And our only option then is to begin to keep cutting and cutting and cutting. And, and so the sacrifice really goes to like your education then is less, all in the push for the dollar. And through this whole budget thing, I've always had this terrible feeling, somehow that the dollar part has become detached from the educational part. And I think the real challenge going forward is we talk about all these, is trying to reestablish the link and finding our best way to have those two things equally addressed as we move forward. So I mean, it's clearly going to be a big challenge.
Now, when we're all depressed, anybody else?
We're going to have that information on class size. And I want, you know, and then you bring up about programs in the school that will be lost. I just, if there, is there any way of quantifying that? You know, how many students it takes? Like Al said, we're going to be losing students anyway. Does that mean if we keep going down this cliff, we're going to be, you know, AP this and, or certain, you know, other programs will necessarily be cut? Or is there a way of kind of knowing what those kinds of things would look like?
I think that's a legitimate question, Ed. And my response would be, you do not want to put any program out for public discussion until late into this process. Because if you start talking about cutting this and cutting that, you run the risk of doing exactly what Al said. You're disconnecting program from, from budget. I think when Todd does his presentation, he's already prepared his data sheets. I've seen them. He's ready to say, here's the range of students I have. And, and he'll name his courses, physics and chemistry and so forth. And you have a policy. And your policy says 12 to 25, I believe. I may be off by one or two. So, you know, Todd's going to say, I don't have 12. Or I do have 12. Maybe I have 27, you know. So he'll be able to say at the high school, this is what's going on. Catherine and I have had an interesting conversation for the last part of the two weeks because my experience in Maine is that Maine provides special ed directors and school systems real guidance in terms of class sizes, if you will. It's really caseloads, same equivalent to what we're talking about at the high school. New Hampshire does not. It offers no advice to Catherine in terms of what a rational, reasonable load of students is for a special ed educator. And they leave that 100% to each district to define. And so much harder for Catherine and I to sit down like Todd, and I could sit down and say, is that a rational number for the needs of these students? Are we meeting these children's IEPs, these children? Are we servicing them well? Are they progressing academically and socially and behaviorally? You know, we have lots of data of success in our special ed program. But there is literally no state regulation or recommendation related to what that load would be. And so every school system has invented that unto themselves. And we have a rich program. We have a very well-staffed, very well-articulated program. And, you know, is that a reasonable program? It's hard to say because you don't have any benchmark to compare it against. So we can call around to other school systems, and we can see what they're doing. We can call into Maine, which I did, and ask them to share their regs with me and so I could share them with Catherine and say, do these make sense for our school district? It's interesting. It's really interesting that the state is completely absent from that discussion. So, long answer.
I have a question, whether you want from the board some sense of priorities or guidelines or, because I'm reminded of, there's a scene in Amadeus where Mozart has this, performs this concerto or something for some kind of duke. And the duke says, I liked it, but it has too many notes. And Mozart's looked at it and says, too many notes. So which notes do you think I should take out? And he says, oh, I don't know that, but it has too many notes. And I think that's kind of what we gave you, you know. It's like, so I'm wondering what, how that guidance, you know, because I think we had a number, but we didn't have a sense of priorities. We didn't say, look at this, look at that. You know, we did, we gave no guidance to.
So I really appreciate that question, Tom, because I think it's an important question. Marie and I have had a couple of conversations around this issue in terms of guidance from, from the board. And the way I have articulated to her, and I articulate to you, is that I think it's administrators' responsibility, me, the principals, and the directors, to provide you with measurable goals that we're trying to achieve in this budget. And we plan on doing that on October 2nd. And then what we would look to on October 17th is you've had them for a couple of weeks. Do these goals make sense? And they'll all be related to our program, our staffing, in measurable goals. Not, do we feel good about these goals? But at the end of the process, would we be able to look at the goals from food service or transportation, from the high school, from the middle school, from our elementary schools and say, we met that goal, and this is how much it costs? So going back to what Ed was raising in terms of appropriate sizes, class size policy is your policy. So that's one way that we can say, okay, every staff member, according to your policy, should have at least 12 students and no more than 25. Give or take, what I say is a fudge factor of two at each end. I've used 10 and 25 with Todd. So if that's the goal from the high school, then you can look at Todd's data and say, whoa, you know, 95% of this is working. We do have the students that support that. And then we might have 5% that's not, that doesn't have the students to support a program. That's when we take, face that tough decision. Is this a program that is critical to us regardless of the class size? Or is this a program that has basically, the students are no longer interested in? We haven't had significant population enrollment in years. And that, as tough as it is, Todd would say, given a hard choice, I would have to say that this program is a program that I would, I would recommend cutting. So I'm reversing it from the past, Tom. You know, what I got a sense of is I talked to each of you as individuals and learning about the process last year was a very high frustration from the board of not feeling like they could articulate what your goals were in terms of program. And that only makes sense because, you know, Jay and Carrie and Dennis and Todd, as well as the operation directors, are the ones that know their program. And so what I'm doing is suggesting that we shift the burden of defining measurable goals to administration that you react to as an elected body and on October 17th say, these are the goals we're going to measure this, this budget development by. And it just, it makes sense to me that we would reverse the process, and you guys would react to it because they're the experts in their buildings. And I would tell you that in the last two weeks, with every one of our administrators, they have been incredibly forthright. They have been excellent in their individual presentations. And, you know, one of the kind of amusing stories is I would end every meeting saying, wow, I really learned a lot about your program. And then Sue and our accountant, Tim, would actually kind of say, yeah, we did too. You know, we always wondered what that line was about. And we were able to, you know, make course corrections and retitle things. For example, that New Hampshire Retirement Fee, we changed the title to New Hampshire Administrator Fee. So that it was clear to the reader that this isn't something that our teachers are getting or a benefit that they receive. This is what we're getting charged by the state of New Hampshire to run the program. So we didn't do, we tried to do that as we saw it. We collapsed lines that made no sense, you know, contracted service, non-ed, contracted service, ed. We didn't see that that was a significant distinction. So we just called it contracted service because it really doesn't make any sense to have two lines when you could have one. So we did a lot of that in this first round. But I think as you guys go through the document, you'll see more of that. Jim, what does this mean? Sue, what does that mean? And part of the clarifying of titles is to make it a better document for the public to understand. Because there's a lot of nonsensical jargon that's there that if we can clean up, makes it a better document. Will we get it all done in one year? No. I mean, there'll be multiple years where somebody will say, maybe this is a place that we could change. And we tried to collapse, like in some cases, we had a Moheramit account, a Masway account, a middle school account, and a high school account that all equaled $8,000. So we said, why don't we just call that a contracted account for the district? And save Sue and Tim and the principals from writing that individual code every single time. So it's an efficiency part of it. It won't be all perfect for her time, you get it. But over a period of time, working, over a period of time, working collectively, we can improve the document. The other piece is the view from 5,000 feet is important. With the budget you guys get is so detailed that if you're not a detailed person by nature, it will cross your eyes. You know, there's this level after level of peeling the onion back. Well, there's also the possibility you give people too much information. You know, somebody will look at that list of, you know, we have three teachers at first grade who have master's degrees plus 30. I don't think that anybody really cares except this body and a few select people what that particular information is there for. I think a summary sheet that says, we have, you know, X number of teachers, and you'll see it, how I built it out. I built it out by, by the unions and then non-union. So if you wanted to know how many teachers we had in the district, you can go through this one sheet and say, oh, there's 24 teachers at Moheramit. Do we really need to know what those 24 individual teachers make as a salary in a budget document? We need to know the total. And it makes more sense to the consumer, you as a consumer, I think, and to the community as a consumer. Now, in truth, Sue Caswell keeps the document to that level of detail because it's useful to her. And if you want it that way, we can make it that way for you. The general public, it's just, it's just what I would consider burying people in data. And so they still don't understand it. And so they get frustrated by the document. So we have put some views in at 5,000 feet to try to capture big lines, instruction, special ed, transportation, as a summary sheet. We've captured our population by division, by, by cost center. So you can see that much easier. You can see it quickly. You don't have to go to Moheramit and count all of those and say, is there really 24 people there? Or is that really 23? You know, and get caught in, in, you know, human mistake. The summary document's been validated. Sue's been doing that. Teresa's been doing that. I've been modifying so it's more user-friendly. You guys will get it. You'll decide whether it is more user-friendly. If you don't like it, we throw it out. We'll try again and give it another way. So we're trying to make the document more friendly as well.
Ann?
On topic with regard to the detail you list for our teachers, I think what's been useful for folks in our community to understand is the level of development our teachers have and that the steps that they're at. And that we have a workforce that is highly educated and highly experienced, which then reflects the cost of having that kind of workforce. So my fear is if you pull out so much of that detail, for some folks, that's critical detail because it justifies to them why we spend what we spend.
Yep. And we already have a chart that actually demonstrates that because Sue and I had to make it for the retirement incentive. So we can capture that in a chart that shows.
As long as it's someplace.
Where our staff is on a scale. So again, if anybody wants the level of detail that Sue keeps for herself, we can give that to anyone. And we'll give that to you if that's what you want. And we'll give it to anybody in the community who requests it. But the published document for consumption, I think, has to be far less than what we're getting. Because I got the message, as I've talked to people, that the document is not user-friendly. And maybe it's impossible to get a budget document of this magnitude to be user-friendly. But I think we can make it friendlier.
Krista?
First, let me say that the budget has come a long way in the last two years, the document itself. Sue has done an amazing job of getting from point A to point F. And it's getting better every year. And like you said, it's not something that's going to happen over a year. So she's been working on it for two years, and she'll continue to work on it until we feel we've gotten to, or she feels, because I don't write it, a document that, you know, people don't complain as much about. And that they can understand. People, anybody can read it and tell you, you know, yes, we're spending money on this, this, and this. So I just wanted to make that point, that it's not the first year that we've worked on the budget. It's her third year that she's worked on this budget document, and it only continues to get better. I have to ask a question that I think I know the answer to. But for the public at large, I think it's important to ask. If we have, because there are some revenue streams that we are currently tapping into that if we realize those will generate revenue for the budgets that we've already passed. So this year's budget, there are possible revenue streams that we could come into that would cause us to spend less money for our budget than we originally anticipated. So that money will go back to the town. And can you just explain to how that works so that people understand? But if we have, because we keep talking about revenue generation. We spent that whole time. And the difficult part always for me is that we're trying to predict a budget for next year when we barely started this budget. So we don't even know what we're spending. And then we're saying, oh, yeah, and in two years, we're going to spend this. And not taking into account any of that revenue generation necessarily because we just started it. So can you just quick explain that to people so that everyone's on the same page? Do you understand what I'm saying?
No, I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
Anyone, no, I'm just kidding.
So you're talking about surplus that might be out there that gets added to?
Right, but we try not to, I mean, we.
We don't plan for, is that what your question is?
No, and we historically had large surpluses.
Right.
That have actually caused us angst. But I'm not talking about those kinds of surpluses. I'm talking about surpluses because we've generated revenue to replace those costs. So it's, it's the same thing. It's the same surplus.
Right, right.
But it's not going to be 1.2 million.
Right, right.
It's not going to be 2 million.
Right.
It's going to be a smaller surplus. However, that goes back to the towns and therefore is credited for the next year.
Right, that's correct. So you can have unanticipated revenues, which would be if we predict we'd have, we predict we have 60 students from Barrington, and we end up having 80. Those are kind of unanticipated revenues, so that helps. And then you also have fund balance, which is unexpended funds. So you may have a turnaround in some of your teaching staff. So you hire a teacher for less than you, than you had budgeted because someone, a senior teacher left. So those are the fund balances you have. And those, like I said, we don't plan for that. But you're right, when you start a budget this early on, and we're all faced with that because we have to have it done by December, you're not going to know really some of those unanticipated costs. So you, you have to be conservative. So.
And the accountant has told us to, that a healthy fund balance is about $500,000.
Right, 1% to 2% of your budget.
We've been exceeding that by a significant amount over the last several years. But this past year, or this year.
It's right about, we're at about 1.2. 1.2. We're waiting for our final audit figures. But yes, it was a healthy balance. But understand that part of that was because we had some uncertainty with retirement. So we spent some of those funds in the prior year's fund balance to help what we might not, what we didn't know at the time, to offset that cost. So we didn't buy our buses. The middle school changed their model with the parents and the teachers. So that was a, so those were some things that we knew were going to be extra. We didn't plan for them, but they were extra. So those things, and those things will always happen. Changes in program, right now, we have in place. Dr. Morris has suggested that every time a position becomes vacant, that we really look at whether or not we need to fill that position. So those kind of things will, will help and make you have a healthier fund balance. And it's always good to have one because you certainly don't want to be in a position where you're in deficit position. So, so, does that explain your question or not?
And I can just take a couple of seconds while Sue is there. Extraordinary business manager.
Thanks.
We're very fortunate to have her skill in the district. A great partner for me as we're working through issues because I'll think in global terms, and she'll put the detail. and she'll put the detail behind my thoughts. I might write down something and say, what do you think about this mathematically? And I can write it to her and say, is the algorithm right? Is it playing out the way that it should? You know, the example I used last night at the PTO meeting is I'll look down at a number and say, that's about, a series of numbers, and I'll say, that's about 14,000. Sue will come right behind me and say, it's $14,187.78. So it's really great to have a quality person like her as a partner in putting a budget together, because it is hard work, and she makes sure that everything is checked two and three times.
Thank you.
Can I have a question about the administration? You said the administration will provide measurable goals on October 2nd. Will those goals make any assumptions about potential revenue side?
Yeah, Sue and I are doing district goals, so we'll address revenue. And then the building principals and operational directors will make goals related to their cost center. So you'll see district goals from Sue and I, you'll see building level and operational goals, transportation and maintenance, IT at their levels.
Okay, so for example, if Todd felt that, you know, if we just, things continued as is, we're going to go from 64 to like 76 Barrington students, he wouldn't be able to, that's unanticipated revenue, so he's not going to include that type of thing?
Right. What, you know, one of the things, I think is that your question and Krista's question are actually very tightly wound. The, when you're anticipating revenue, you have to be incredibly conservative.
Right.
So if Todd came in and said, Jim, I know we're going to have 80 kids next year. I would say, we had 64 this year. And he'd say, but Jim, I know we're going to have 80. And I'd say, well, in FY '16, we'll count 80, but in FY '14, we're going to count 64, hoping that he's right. But as Sue would tell you, you don't ever want to overpredict your revenue, because if you do, that's where you end up in deficits.
That's what I would expect you to say, I just wanted to-
When you talked about kindergarten and preschool, you did not end up talking about the way I thought you were going to go with it, so I just wanted to bring that conversation back for half a second, namely to preschool. Because I think we also, and I don't know if you're currently looking at this, but I have been a part of an organization that has done a cost analysis on local preschools and how much tuition they charge. And I'm not saying that we should hike our increase, or increase our costs to parents for regular ed students substantially. However, the amount we charge for preschool education is significantly less than all the preschools in our local area.
We discovered that yesterday.
Yeah. And we also, I think, are missing out on a possible revenue stream by not allowing regular ed students' transportation to PEP. And if we offered that, I think there would be an opportunity for some parents to participate in the PEP program with a regular ed student that may not have the opportunity to do that because they can't transport their child to PEP. So I think that it's-
I hadn't thought about revenue from transportation.
Important to look at that as well, because I think you have current regular ed students that would participate in a transportation program if that opportunity was given to them, and that would be willing to pay for services such as that.
Thanks, Krista.
Anything further?
I don't know, it's school board committee updates. School board committee updates.
All right, well, I'm going to, you know, after all that, I'll shift around how I'm going to talk about this. I'm going to start with communication. And I'll be, but this one's important, so I'll, so I'll start with communication and the, you know, following along with policy BAA, which is, I'm supposed to come up with goals, and I'm going to start with the first one, which is improve organizational communication. And where we have failed is that we are very piecemeal. And so we have administrators who are busy trying to administer their buildings, and we have the central administrative staff that all have a lot of things that they're trying to do. And then instead of having a coherent communication policy or setup, we just say, oh, by the way, can you just add this on? And when you do that, as you can see, it doesn't work very well. So it's going to be money well-spent, I know this is a terrible time to talk about this, but, but we really need a central communication person, whether we can do it somehow within our current staffing, someone who could help coordinate our message and effectively get it out to the public. I mean, really, it's one of the most important, besides educating our kids, being able to articulate how we're doing to the public is one of our biggest tasks, so we need that. Having a central person, you know, just the simple things like branding, that the way that we send out messages, the fonts are the same, all of that, that we have a coordinated, well-designed message, things like the pumpkin patch, all that, they link back to the other schools so that it, we can see how everything is working. So really, it's time that we look at that, because it'll help us moving forward. That brings me to my second one, which is the website. It's no secret that websites are incredibly un-user-friendly. I mean, you have to drop down, I mean, just, when somebody was asking me potentially about the Newmarket thing, I found myself going back, well, go to the 5-2 board meeting agenda, and you can find this document, and go to the, and it was just ridiculous. It's not well put together. So we've talked to Josh about it, and there is somebody who designed our website, and so we're going to have him back in, I think, October 9th. Hopefully, we'll be able to see them and get to look at some other ones. I actually asked him in a scientific kind of way, can you give me where the hits are going? Where are people going on our websites? What are the places that are getting the most looks? And I mean, my guess, I threw right out for the bat, is it's got to be like the lunch menu. That's got to be the first place. Everybody goes to the lunch menu because they want to see what's there. But that will give us at least some kind of idea where the traffic is flowing, and where the traffic is biggest, that should allow us to design the website so it's easy for people to find stuff. And along that line, I know, you know, it's crazy, maybe I'll overwhelm the system, but if people really do, out there in TV land, can tell me where your frustrations lie with our website, what are you looking for, and what can't you find? And you can drop me an email at aholland@orcst.org, and that will-
Now you've done it.
I know, I know. I mean, I can see the system, you know what, the computer will be crashed tomorrow. But that will allow us at least to get a better idea of where your frustrations lie, and that we can fix the problem by making it more user-friendly.
Did you hear that? All emails go to Aholland.
Exactly. On a fun note, so that was, my second goal is to make the websites more user-friendly. On a fun note, Oyster River TV is going to be up and running. Kathleen is working away, and I actually have a little segment on Oyster River TV that I came in here and I had the students film. I keep worrying, it's like there's a blank background there, and I keep envisioning it'll be like this thing, one of those things like I'm with stupid over there, something like that in the background. But she assured me it wouldn't be the case. So what I plan on doing is I would cover a small part about what's really important going on in the schools. I hate to sneak preview it, but I went over the PTOs and gave a sell of why the PTOs are important, and who are the PTO chairs, to get them kind of working. And then the next segment was what's going on with the board, and I threw out the Newmarket, and that will be a place we can talk about what's going on with us here. A preview coming up, and I was like dropping on John, he hasn't know yet, but it's like, one of the segments we plan on doing is going over the basic budget process. We get a chance, like a student could interview me, and we could talk about, okay, how do we come up with goals, and kind of work it through so everybody has a good understanding, and it'd be really helpful for the students as well. So that's the fun one. The, back to the serious ones, Kenny brought up a thing about public forums, or how do we get the community involved? And as I said, there's, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty that we're looking at. And anytime there's uncertainty, the potential for unrest is great. And I don't really have a place, I mean, we don't have all the information, for example, of Newmarket, to actually go out and have a public forum to talk about Newmarket. So what I'd like to do is be able to give people a baseline of information so that we can actually have intelligent conversations. And so in that case, what I've asked Dr. Morris to do is to begin to put out one-page information sheets. Let's give the long-range planning, you know, information out there, one sheet so people can look at, let's see that. The capital improvement, all the things that we're going to have to put together that are going to determine what our future is moving forward. In, every two weeks, you'll get a sheet out there, so that by the time we actually do get to these public forums, the, you know, urban legends that won't really exist, you can coherently talk or ask us, well, okay, I don't believe the long-range planning thing. And we can really have focused, good conversations. So that brings me to my third one, which is, third goal, which is to develop information sheets about the district. And I think that takes care of all my, my communication stuff. Should I just segue right on to the next one?
Could you put those goals in bullets?
I haven't done my minutes yet, but I am going to get them done tomorrow, and this will all go out, so you can see that. The second one that I did in my quest through my committees this week-
Wait just a minute. Can we have those goals for the next meeting to approve?
Yes, I will have the goals for the next meeting. In fact, I'll go in my, my minutes for the, can we-
I just typed them up if you want.
Okay. And I, and I will pass them along to you guys. And actually, again, thank you for that.
And Ann has a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Wow, Al. I have to-
He had too much coffee.
All right, sorry.
I sat on the communication committee last time around, and unfortunately, we were a little, with our hands tied behind our backs, because all the things you are doing, we couldn't do without board approval. So I would caution you that these are all great ideas, but you can't do any of them without board approval.
Well, that's why we're bringing the goals.
That's the goals.
Well, I just want to make sure that Al hasn't, you know, put the batteries in and starts it off. It's because they're great ideas, but you have to be very careful about acting as an individual when we are board, and all these things can't happen until we, as a board, approve them. And I have a question about the gentleman who's working on the website. Is he coming forward with a proposal? Is he just starting to do some work?
There's no work that's been done. It's purely informational. We, I mean, again, I'm still at the point where I'm really looking at what the biggest problems are with our website. But he's going to come in, at least it'll give us an idea of what we're looking at, you know? And of course, if there was going to be money spent or anything like that, or the design, I mean, not only does it, is it the board itself, but I, I mean, the administrators, it's your schools that you're working with, and I need input from there, too, so. And I, again, all these ideas that are on there, there's nothing that I've, you know, run amok with, like, the communication. It's, these are all things that Maria, Dr. Morris, and myself have talked about. And of course, I, you know, I brought them back to the boards, and nothing has started other than Oyster River TV, which is already a school program that I'm a guest on. Nothing has started that I've directed or pushed forward. The only thing, I guess, that I've kind of jumped on is, is having him begin to develop some information sheets, which-
Which I was doing anyway.
He was going to do it anyway. So, but I think now that I have at least articulated what the three goals are of the communication committee, it gives some direction about where we're trying to go. And it'll give the board a better sense of what the committee really is trying to do. And as I come back here or anything, I mean, there are going to be some steps where I do have to come back to the board and ask, for example, like a communications person or the, I'm going to have to, you know, and that would be a motion in a public thing, so.
But the goals will be on the agenda for next time, too.
They will be on the October 3rd agenda for the board to approve.
To approve. Okay. Now you-
Okay, next one. My, next of my, my meetings. The ABC met, and they've been toiling away with a task that we had, which is looking at our facility studies and the prioritization, and how, how we're going to allocate fixing our buildings. And we've been very lucky, because we do have somebody on the ABC who actually is a building engineer. And he's spent a good bit of time toiling through all of those reports. And, I mean, he's even gone up on the roof, and it's just a pretty amazing amount of work. We're lucky to have a volunteer like that. And so what he's done is he's taken all of those, those priorities and tried to apply a filter of like, what's the most important thing? What's the second most important? What's the least important? And come up with a number that's going to come to the board, and give us some idea of what we need to spend. So they put a motion forward, and I believe a letter is going to come to the board that will give a number of what the highest priorities are and what we should build into our budget. So that's coming our way. The second thing, this is, you know, just a continuous theme, is the, the ABC asked me, they said that their, their work would be easier if they had a strategic plan to work from. I've said, I know, and I'm quite sure that Dr. Morris knows as well and is working on it, that it's hard to formulate a budget or have a clear goal of where you're going with your budget if you don't really have a clear sense of what your priorities are. And I told them, we know and we're working on it. So that's it, that's my meetings.
Thank you. The policy committee is also working on it, and that's on the policy committee. Agenda for next time is to set goals that will also be brought back here. Any other committees? Then we had the motion to approve minutes of 9:52. Ann?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 5th.
Second.
Moved by Ann. Second by Krista.
I have a correction.
Yes?
Laura tried to give away $2 to Lori Gaylord for the MS Yearbook stipend. Sorry, it's not 1958, it's 1956. Just a small change, but $2 is $2.
And I already corrected the time.
Yep, thank you. Nice job.
Any further discussion hearing done? Could we have a show of hands, please?
John, you enjoying putting your hand up?
So the affirmative and the student representative in the affirmative as well. Public comments?
Karen Dunn. Hurry up, Stephanie.
Stephanie Adams. I have one suggestion for the communications committee. Something I'd like to see on OR TV is the ABC committee meetings on TV. If you watch the town sites, there are other committees, you know, zoning board, Durham's got the economic development committee, and that's something I think a lot of people are interested in and like to follow, so that's something I'd like to be seeing on TV.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean Rubin Natalie Lee. That was pretty sobering news about the $500,000. I just want to say a few things about the budget. When Sue first announced that $700,000, there was some sort of leeway there of unspecified additional things that were supposed to come. I think some of the bargaining units weren't included, and then there were non-bargaining unit employees. And I guess I wonder if that 1.2 million is even larger. About the goal, I went back and I looked in the minutes, and it was fairly ambiguously worded. It said something about a level budget over two years or something. And then I went back and looked at the minutes, and, you know, there's quite a few ways you could interpret that. I guess the point I'll make here is that that's basically a nominal number. We're trying to keep the, you know, the dollar amount unchanged. Let's say that's what it means. means, unchanged next year. So in other words, any actual inflation, we're just, translates to a cut, and inflation is running somewhere around 1.5 or 2%, which I guess is $600,000 or $800,000. About, so about half of that money is, is just inflation, half of that 1.2 million. The other thing about that goal, the goal is that we could find all the revenue we want, we could find a pot of gold with $38 million in it, and that doesn't, that doesn't change the fact that we're going to, we're still going to have a, try to have a flat amount spent next year, independent of any, of any revenue we may or may not come into as the goal currently stands. And I, well, I suppose as a taxpayer, I would, you know, rather see my taxes flat than the spending flat, or, I don't know, I suppose, the goal doesn't include revenue as it exists, which I, which seems to be, to be a problem. I'll just stop there.
Hi, John Collins from Lee. I was going to talk about Future Search for a while, but I think I want to talk about the budget. But quickly, Future Search, from what I've heard of it, it's, you're going to get together 100 people and do some collective visioning? These are all going to be from Oyster River?
Yeah.
Are you going to do anything collective?
Is that a good luck with that, John?
I would just...
Aaron Collins.
Go read that chapter from Stuart Little. Maybe it is impossible. I just remind you, as I'm sure you're aware, we have a vision and an educational philosophy that, product of the abbreviated strategic planning process that we, from a couple years back, approved by the staff, by that committee, and by the board. So I would hope that any collective visioning actually use that as its foundation and go forward from that. Anyway, about the budget, trying to come near to a quote of what you said, that the decision from June, or the board's direction from June was, we'd like to see what a flat budget would look like. All right? And I see what it looks like, 1.2 million. Have I mentioned I was on the board? I guess I mentioned it a few times. I remember one year when we were doing the budget, we would meet in November for a few days, an all-day Saturday, and we were sitting there quibbling over $500 to paint a fence at Mastway. And we went on for 15, 20, maybe half an hour, and finally, I think it was David Brown or Jay Flanders said, you guys, we're talking about $500 here, if you really want to make these cuts, that's peanuts. Real cuts is staff. So you're not going to be able to just not paint the fence at Mastway, it's going to be staff. So if you really want to see what that one, what that flat budget would, go to Mastway next week, or maybe the middle school, say, Jay, I'd like to go sit in the classroom of one of your teachers that is going to be one of those, what, 10, 12, 15, that we're going to let go next year. I want to see the wonderful things they do with our kids that we decided we can't afford anymore.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Maria?
Yes?
Could we ask Sue to clarify what that original $700,000 represented? I believe that it was increasing contracts.
Right, it's, yeah, it's the inflation built into the budget in relation to decisions made on contracts. And I don't necessarily think it included an inflation rate, did it, so?
It's just the contracts we need to complicate and...
Just...
...was...
Right.
Thank you.
Agenda planning, setting, review of future agenda items list. Krista?
I always seem to bring this up at the October budget meeting, and it never seems to go anywhere from there, so I'm going to try a different avenue.
Going to try it in September?
Yeah, I'm going to try September instead, and maybe November, December, January, February, March, and then you get rid of me, so you don't have to hear about it anymore. But anyway, so I think that, and I don't know whether this is part of the presentation for October, which is why I'm bringing it up now, but I've said it before and I'll say it again, I'm concerned about the ratio of students at Mastway versus Moherman. And I think that we...
That's part of the presentation.
We need to learn, to figure that out, because it's not fair to either school.
Future meeting dates is on the 3rd and 17th of October, and there's no non-public session, and looking for a motion...
Motion to adjourn.
Made by Krista, seconded by Anne, and hearing no discussion. All in favor?
Come on, John.
And the students in favor.